Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter 30A, paragraph 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9 on your Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37 on Verizon, FiOS, and livestream wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time. Via technological means, members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656, and enter meeting ID 86902151277, then press pound, and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so. During the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in a queue in the order they entered the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Okay, you want to get going for the 7:30?
Rhonda's been trying to get in, she said for 10 minutes.
Well, she can keep trying. What are we gonna do? I mean...
I think she's here now. Um, Rhonda, are you there? She's... ...video is not showing up, so... And what we can either do, we can do the A&R plan.
We can what? I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
7:30, or we can do the A&R plan. It's up to you.
Let's do the, um, 7:30.
Okay. Great, so, thank you, um, for those who are maybe watching at home. Frank Gingrich, Director of Planning Corporation. The 7:30 is a hearing to amend our storm regulations in town. Reason that we're amending those storm water regulations. We have...
Oh, you're breaking up?
Yeah.
Is that better?
No.
Can you hear me now?
There you go, much better.
Okay, um, so I was saying, let me change my location in the house, and maybe Paul can give an overview of the, um, the proposed changes.
Okay.
Happy to do that. Thanks Valerie and the members of the board. These changes are required by the EPA's NPDES MS4 permit. They're changes to the Regulation section of our Storm Water Management Bylaw. The biggest change is in Appendix E. It's under, um, with new section under Appendix E, which is additional water quality performance standards. So, what this would require is that applicants that have projects that grip an SMP and exceed one acre of disturbance, they would have to provide water quality, um, treatment for one inch of runoff over all their impervious surfaces for new development. Either that, or provide 90, uh, BMP that provides 90% TSS removal. The second requirement is redevelopment projects are going to be required to provide a water qual- that disturb over one acre of land, we need to provide a water quality volume or treatment for .8 inches of runoff over their impervious surfaces for 80% TSS removable. That's the requirements, that's the changes, the biggest change in, um, the Regulation section. For most applicants, I'd say, particularly applicants that are filing an SMP, um, for new development, they're not going to see a change. We already, for the most part, require, or the state policy requires, um, treatment for one inch of runoff over impervious surfaces for, I'd say, the majority of applicants, um, depending on their land use, and if they're in a Zone 2, or if they have a site with rapid infiltration. The biggest change is for redevelopment projects where that requirement is, um, it's not a requirement, it's only, applicants are just required to meet that to the maximum extent practical, where now, they're going to be required to provide water quality volume for .8 inches of runoff um, over their impervious surfaces. So, I can tell you firsthand from designing these systems, um, and reviewing consultants' work in town, I find it pretty hard pressed to find someone that can't cite a water quality BMP that provides that level of treatment anyhow, but, um, I guess they technically always would have a fallback of the maximum extent practical clause in the policy, whereas now that would, uh, this would sort of trump that, um, state policy. That's, um, that's the gist of it.
Okay. Board members, have any questions? Everybody's good? Val?
Yeah, no...
I can kind of chime in, um, here while Val's frozen. Though there are, um, some minor cleanup items throughout the document too, but I don't think there are any, like, um, specific changes. We did track changes throughout the document, so if you read through it, you can see some, you'll see some red lines here or there, but really, the significant change is that in Appendix E, under additional water quality performance standards.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that has a question? Can we tell, Val?
Uh, there's nobody waiting.
There's nobody, we don't have anyone with a hand raised.
Okay.
Uh, we could, we could wait a couple, you know, wait a few seconds. There is a little bit of a delay on the TV. Um, am I coming, am I coming in better now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, good. My internet connection is unstable.
There's nothing to vote on here, right? This was just a discussion?
Um, no, there is, um, so, it was a public hearing, so it would be closing the public hearing and, um, and yes, and voting on the regulation changes.
Okay.
I should mention too, the EPA gave us to July 1st, um, 2020 to make our bylaw in regulations. So, we're right up against this.
Alright.
No pressure.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to accept the recommendations as presented.
And, and close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing. I'm just gonna do that separate, but we can do it together?
So moved. Terry. I'll second.
Okay. Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sean, how do you vote?
Yes.
Angela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Randy, how do you vote? She, she there?
She doesn't have any audio connected.
Okay. Chairman votes in favor.
Thank you.
We'll take it as, uh, four in favor and one abstained. Good?
That's...
There you go. You're back.
Was that a... Rhonda, was, was that a yes from you?
Three times I've said yes. Four times I've been kicked out.
There you go. Good. Alright, so we're all set?
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so...
Good night.
We're gonna move on to the 7:40?
Yes.
Okay, so 7:40, we're looking to continue public hearing, Site Plan Review 20-02, Storm Water Management Permit 20-02 for 3:30 Ballardville Street. Map 3, Parcel 29.
And Mr. Chairman, they submitted a request to continue to the, um, to the July meeting. We have a time slot at 7:40 again, if you'd like to put them at that time slot.
Which day is the meeting? July what?
July 7th.
It is the 7th, okay. Okay, take a motion to continue to July 7th at 7:40.
Alright, so moved. Second.
Do, do they also need an extension for their time to the end of the month, or?
No, we're good on that.
Okay, good. Okay. So, Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Randy? Angela?
Yes.
Chairman says yes. Rhonda's raising her hand, I can tell. Tell her to text in to Cheryl if we can't get her vote.
I don't, I don't think we'll need her vote tonight. Um, not that we won't miss it, but...
I got you.
Second me out. The... I can't hear.
It's terrible.
Yeah. Rhonda, have you tried to move your... Have you tried to move locations?
Hey, hey, we got two minutes. You wanna, you wanna, you wanna do the form A? We got two minutes for the next one, by my watch, anyway.
Sure, let me, um, let me pull it up on the screen. Okay, so this A&R is, um, a kind of a swap of a little non-buildable parcel, um, 616 square feet. Going from, let's see, so Parcel A... Let me just, uh... Move this. Alright, so it would be conveyed to 101 Middle Six Ave, which is um, this one. So it's going from this lot to this lot. It, it doesn't impact either of those lots as far as, um, you know, complying to zoning. It does help their existing garage, um, with a little bit more setback, but, um, non-buildable, like, lot right here that conveyed from these people to these people. We had engineering review the, the A&R, and, um, it appears to be acceptable.
Okay. Take a motion to accept the plan as submitted.
So moved. Terry.
Um, I'll second. Sean?
Okay. Angela, how you vote?
Yes.
Sean, how you vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Randy? Chairman's in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a 7:50 public hearing, Site Plan Review 20-04, Storm Water Management Permit 20-04 for 100 Eam Street, Map 38, Parcell 4 and 4C. Is, is that you, Mr. Peterson?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. How are you?
Very good. How are you?
Good. And I think Patrick McCarty and Jamie Garrity should be in, although I don't see either one of them at the moment.
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
Oh.
I'm, I'm here too.
Oh, hi Jamie, hi Pat.
Hey, good.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, since the last public hearing, uh, we did address, uh, all of the concerns that were raised by Paul Aloni, the town engineer, relative to this site. Did not get them in with the requisite two-week notice. Uh, so I, I don't believe you have any comments from Paul this evening based on our revised submittal. Uh, and we received on last Friday, uh, the report from Green International Affiliates, who the town hired, uh, to be the traffic consultant on the town side for this project. And we are in the process of preparing a response to that correspondence. Uh, and if, if we may, I would just like to have Jamie take a few minutes and outline, uh, what we have done since the last public meeting, Mr. Jim.
Okay. Good. Patrick, do you want to take it, or do you want me to go through the plans?
Well, no, I'm happy to do it. I'm gonna try to share my screen and see how we do here.
Okay, great. Turning the screen is a little beyond me at the moment.
Ah, how's that? Everybody looking at the site plans?
Hey, pretty good there, Patrick. Good.
Alright, I'm off to a good start. So, good evening for the record, Patrick McCarty, uh, McCarty Engineering, here with Attorney Peterson and Jamie Garrity, the applicant. We will ask before the board on May 5th to present the site plans. Since that time, we've done quite a bit of work. We received a comment, um, letter from Valerie, and also from Mr. Aloni and Mr. Holt. So, we put together a comment response letter dated May 18th that's 14 pages long, so I won't, um, certainly go through each and every line item. But we did, we did pretty much agree to everything that was on the plans, or made appropriate adjustments to the plans. And also dated May 18th, we have the revised site plan documents that are in front of you on your screen. So, this is just the cover sheet, nothing, uh, too exciting there. This is the updated survey from Dana Perkins. One of the comments or, um, issues was to have the wetland delineation peer reviewed. So, myself, Scott Morrison from Echo Tech, and the town's consultant, LEC, met on site, and we walked, uh, all of the area at the rear of the site where the wetlands are. We did end up adding, uh, nine flags. We added right here, and we added seven, uh, sorry, six right here to connect the B series and the D series, and we added one flag adjustment over here. We, we hung those flags in the field. We had Dana Perkins go out and locate them, and it was an updated existing conditions plan that we used, uh, to prepare our revised drawings. This is the demolition plan, just to refresh everybody's memory. The existing two-story building that's U-shaped, if the front of the street is being demolished. The single-story pre-engineered metal building, the mint-green colored building at the rear of the lot is proposed to be demolished. Mr. Aloni was very helpful. He provided us with, um, all the record drawings that the engineering department had on file for this site. So, we were able to update all the water, sewer, gas locations to each of the buildings and label those sizes, which was one of his comments. We also updated our proposed erosion control barrier slash limit of work, which is this line here, um, at the rear of the site. And then we have a graphical limit of work that follows the property line across the front edge. This area of pavement that we're actually trimming back, if you notice, there's quite a bit of space for a dry well between the tips of these spaces and these spaces. So, we're proposing to cut some of this out to reduce the amount of, um, impervious area within the Zone 2. And then we come across and we basically follow the curb line here. So, everything inside this shape is our project area. So, that's the update to the demo plan. The layout and materials plan, the building, proposed 44,000 square foot building essentially stayed the same. We did, um, reduce the size of this front overflow parking area. We made some comments, uh, on the right-hand side. We added a bunch of notes about snow storage and snow disposal and use of rock salt within the buffer zone. We added a zoning conformance table line item for the existing buildings. We did the parking summary update for, uh, both the Alcoat side of things and the Garrity Stone side of things. And we added, um, impervious area table for impervious area within the groundwater protection district, and we're a net decrease of 3,300 square feet of impervious area. Grading and drainage, um, we made also some, some pretty substantial revisions to this plan to address Mr. Aloni's comments. Starting at the front of the site, everything used to sheet flow here and follow the existing curb line to the back. Now, we've added a catch basin to a small underground infiltration system here, to help recharge some of the water and also to provide water quality. This is equipped with an isolator row. One of these rows is where it'll catch the sediment before it infiltrates in the remaining. This was a dry well at the proposed dock height loading dock. It's now a catch basin with a deep sump and a hood that goes to another small infiltration basin. Is everybody seeing my mouse moving as I'm talking?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep.
All this grading here has stayed the same. Grading here has stayed the same. We had a swale along the back of the building that, uh, continued down and discharged into the wetlands. Now, we have that as an ADS pipe header, a 12-inch pipe that picks up the downspokes, discharges at this flared end, and we have an A grade infiltration basin to treat all of the rooftop, because this is a single-snoop roof. It slopes from here to here and then down gutters. So, that'll all be infiltrated, and it has an emergency spillway here, uh, out. And then, at Mr. Aloni's suggestion, before we had this rip, this, um, P-stone diaphragm to catch the runoff from the parking lot that went to just a small, um, depression here for storm water. What we have now is still that P-stone diaphragm. We have a small, uh, pool for settlement, and then we have a pocket wetland, which is a meandering channel here for the water to take its time meandering through and get, uh, treated before it discharges to the wetlands. And that, that pocket wetland was Mr. Aloni's suggestion, so we're, we're hopeful that he's happy with the changes made to the grading and drainage plan. Utility plan changes were pretty minor. Uh, we had the proposed water line coming to the building for the sprinkler service, and then just before it got to the building, we were tapping off for a domestic. They asked us to come back to the, to the main site, uh, water line for both services, so we did that. As part of the regrading, we relocated the transformer, but pretty minor stuff relative to utility changes. Landscape, uh, plan, we could, we have a lot more landscaping now proposed in this pocket wetland, um, all designed to the MASTEP guidelines for our pocket wetland, so I'm hoping, uh, town engineering is happy with this design. And then we have some plantings along front kind of showroom area of the building and the landscape islands along the sides of the slopes for the entrance and exit driveway. And here, and all of this has been revised to take into account the, uh, the slopes, because there is some grading down from the street into the site, and there's a small retaining wall here at its highest point, right here. It's five feet tall. The rest of it's four feet tall. Connects to the abutters retaining wall that's right on the property line. Lighting plan, um, if you noticed the red note, our lighting consultant didn't get back to us by last Tuesday, and we wanted to get the meat of the plans up to the town, so, um, they had them in advance of the meeting, so we put this note on, and we did just deliver a revised plan yesterday, and understand, we fully understand that no one's had a chance to look at that. But the concern with this lighting plan was the spillage of light over the property line. You could see that the foot candles read 1, 1.22. So, we had our lighting consultant revise this, so it's zeros at the lot line, and also added some fixtures, wall pack fixtures on the existing buildings over here to brighten up this area, this area where it's at zeros. The detail sheets have been revised to address town comments. Um, on this sheet, we added a detail for a marker post that we're proposing at the 15-foot wetland, um, no disturb area, just so future development is aware of that 15-foot no-touch. That was another recommendation in the peer review. We've updated the retaining wall, um, detail. I just noticed that I updated the detail itself to be steel, but I forgot to change the text. So, that was one of the comments. We had timber guardrail proposed, and Mr. Aloni requested that we switch that to steel to match the other, uh, guardrails on Eam Street, but apparently I missed changing the word wood to steel. So, obviously, I'll catch that on the next round. Uh, this is a blow-up detail of the pocket wetland that was added. And this is the erosion and sediment control plan, again, updated to reflect the design changes, but the text and the handling of the site remain the same. This is the town's ladder truck that the specs were provided to us. This plan demonstrates that the ladder truck can come into the site, come down the driveway. It can pull up to the front of the building if necessary. It can back in front of the building and then come back out. It also shows that the fire truck can come down the main driveway, take a right after existing building 12 that will remain, and be able to loop through this driveway, and then back out and exit onto Eam Street. And again, these specifications are the town's exact ladder truck provided by Mr. Aloni. We updated the, um, the floor plan. So... One of the questions was the showroom and whether it was a retail component. So what we did is we added some detail to the showroom. So so Garrity is a stone fabricator. So if you're redoing your kitchen, your bathroom, any kind of stone surface you want in your house, you'd be able to come in with your kitchen designer. There'd be some islands that are mocked up. There'll be some cabinets that are mocked up, different countertops, different sink selections. This is kind of the greeting counter. This would be a freestanding wall with the Garrity logo on it. On the backside would be a false fireplace with a stone surround. Again, just more cabinet countertop displays. And on the wall here and here would just be floor to ceiling shallow shelves that have different squares of all the different stone products that you could come in. And and you know, I did this design with Jamie's input. It's certainly not an architectural plan meant to convey to the board that this isn't a retail type of establishment where you'd come in and actually purchase something. You know, have a transaction and then leave. It's it's more to come in and view all the different options for the stone. General office area. Private offices and cubicles and bathrooms and a conference room. Bathrooms and showers for the shop employees and break room for the shop employees. And then if I zoom back out the delivery truck. So a ten-wheel flatbed truck would come loaded with slabs. It would back into the building and there's bridge cranes. That they would unload the stone and then store them on metal A-frames all throughout this area. And then they would be queued for a job and loaded through the doors here and here into the fabrication area where they're cut and shaped and polished and edge detailed. Everything to make your your countertop and then they're staged here. And then all these doors are the the van height loading doors where they would load the finished product onto the vans each morning to go out for installation on the jobs. We have one door here where you'd be able to drive out onto an elevated concrete platform with a open top dumpster on either side of it so that they could dispose of the stone fragments that are waste from the fabrication process. So that's the overview of the floor plan. Elevation still looked the same as last time. And then one of the questions was the design was kind of I don't want to say cut up, but it was, we were working around the buildings that remain. So as everyone knows, there's seventeen existing buildings out here now that are all occupied by all coat, including this building that's being demolished and this being building that's being demolished. Building number twelve houses the boilers that heat, provide heat for all the buildings. And so we can't immediately demolish that building. What this plan is showing that when we, when we can ultimately demolish it, these parking aisles can be extended to connect to that intermediate driveway and it becomes a much more conventional parking layout. And then we'd have this area that we could either redevelop to another small building or maybe add additional parking. And then all of these buildings as well in phase two would come down for a proposed building. But again, that's that's years off. All coat has a leaseback provision from when Jamie purchased the land. But this is just showing the board that there there is kind of a method to our madness. And eventually we'll get there when we're able to take down these three buildings that have critical support items in them to all coats business. And then we added two detail sheets for the two underground storm tech systems are the last two sheets.
Alright, I think that's good. I think you're good.
Well, uh That just quickly, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The other couple of things is Kleinfelder did review our plans and they issued a letter that says the town water supply is adequate to support the proposed development. The site is a net import fulfill, so there's no earth removal permit requirement. I went over the storm water management. And then we did just on this past Friday, receive the peer review from Green International on our traffic assessment. We forwarded that to T E P P, our traffic consultant. He's reviewing it now and formulating a response that will get to Valerie with plenty of time before the next meeting. So we're, we understand that, you know, we just got these revised plans in a week ago and that it takes time to review and go through the fourteen-page letter and the seventeen pages of plans. And we're hopeful that we've satisfied the comments and that by the next meeting we should have any outstanding issues wrapped up and hopefully moving forward towards an approval. So happy to answer any questions.
Board have any questions? I think we're okay. So we'll wait till Paul gives a good review and we get some comments from him.
I did render this this afternoon, just so the board has kind of an idea of the the area of the site that we're working on. Bring it out. Three remain. This medium green is wetland areas that we're not touching. Our two new storm water management areas, proposed building and existing building to remain.
Okay. Do you, Val, do you want to go to traffic and have?
Yeah. Yeah, so Wayne Wong from Green International is in the meeting tonight to to discuss the peer review for traffic. So if you, if the board would like to hear from the peer reviewer, he's he's here to present.
Wayne, you comfortable? You want to have a discussion?
Absolutely. I do have a small presentation prepared, but I can go anywhere you want to. If you want to just dive into questions, however you like.
Uh, go with the presentation. Go ahead. That's good.
I will try to share my screen and hopefully everything works out here. Can everyone see?
Yes, yes.
I will, I will go. Right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Wayne Wong. I'm with Green International Affiliates, where the traffic care reviewer for the redevelopment here at one hundred Eam Street. As part of our work, we review the traffic assessment memo dated April thirteenth, two thousand twenty, as well as the site plans that were dated on February twenty-seven, twenty twenty. We also perform a site visit to measure site distance as part of our work, which we'll get to later. And we completed our our letter last week. And tonight I'll be going over the highlights of our review. I'm not going to present every comment, but we'll focus on more of the important ones. So I'll start off with the traffic assessment review. While we're generally satisfied with the brief nature of the memo and it's largely due to the small or the expected small increase in traffic as a comparison to existing use. However, we are looking for additional clarifications as some of these may affect the number of new trips that might be generated by the redevelopment. So for example, and I think I hear some clarification tonight, is that the the use of the building. For example, how much of the percentage is warehouse? How much percentage is office space? Generally, each type of use generates a slightly different number in terms of trips as defined by I T E or industry standards. So in this case, the memo only assume a single end use, which is industrial use. So we'd like to have confirmation on the use of the building and how it relates to generation calculations. Another key clarification we'd like to have is the size of the proposed building relative to the existing building. The memo indicated the building size will increase by approximately sixteen thousand square feet. But we noted that it might be a discrepancy about twenty-two thousand square feet based on the site plans that we review. And this increase in building size is critical because it has a direct correlation to the number of new trips. And also for comparing the existing conditions to determine the net increase in total trips. So we definitely would like to have that clarified. And lastly, we just would like to have a little more, little bit more information regarding the expected truck routes. As you all know, familiar with the location, the geometry at the intersection of Eam Street, at Main Street, as well as at Wilburn Street can make certain truck movements difficult. So we would like to point that out. And if if the truck, truck routes are known, then we could have further discussions on this topic if needed. And equally important is also we want to know what type of truck we'll be assessing the site and we will talk about this a little bit more in detail as we move on to the the site plans. And I I would say the most critical element in our review was the expected site distance at the proposed driveway. So while we're out there, we took few measurements at roughly the same location where the proposed driveway would be located. And we have a couple of concerns regarding site distance. First off, the site distance should be measured against what's called eighty-fifth percentile travel speed. It is the speed in which most motorists are either traveling at that speed or below that speed. And this is the speed that is used by national guideline in industry practice when it's compared to a site distance. The memo did not collect speed data as part of studies, but for the purpose of our review, we were able to pull some old data about ten years ago for a project that was located west of the bridge or the railroad. And using that data, the eighty-five, eighty-five percentile speed for Eam Street is around forty-three, forty-four miles an hour. So that's how we measure or against the site distance versus minimum versus what is required. And as you can see, the stopping site distance at the proposed driveway looking west, in this case, looking towards the bridge and towards the railroad, the stopping site distance is less than the minimum required. And stopping site distance is generally for vehicles traveling on Eam Street, being able to see an obstruction and then be able to stop safely in time. And the second piece of the site distance is intersection site distance, which is measurement for a vehicle sitting at the proposed driveway looking out onto Eam Street and then be able to have a safe time to pull into the main road. And as you can see, what we measure or what we approximate it is just meeting the minimum. However, it's not as simple as that simple comparison may seem. If we look at the site plan, the proposed driveway does come up at a relatively steep grade, around seven and a half percent or so approximately from the site onto Eam Street. So that's a relatively steep grade. In addition to that, there are proposed guardrails located along both sides of the driveway. And I'm assuming everybody can see my cursor. So the combination of the grades on the driveway along with the location of the guardrail were concerned that they could be obstructing the visibility of a driver's height. So the comment that we had in the peer review letters, make sure the applicant demonstrate that these features here do not obstruct the site distance. As you can see from the table previous that they are relatively tight. Next, I'll go into the site plan review. As mentioned earlier, the app can, if they could indicate the type of trucks that will be accessing the loading docks in the back as well as the ones in the front, that will obviously be very important. And as well as providing truck movement templates to, so that we can verify that the the site layout is going to be able to accommodate any type of trucks that are coming here. In addition, fire trucks, which I heard earlier tonight, so we'll be able to review that going forward. And also potentially a garbage truck in the back that the dumpster is shown in the corner of the building and we just want to make sure that access is possible. Another key element that we commented on was potential truck encroachment on Eam Street. If a large truck, there are times when a large truck has to encroach onto a main street in order to come through the turn. Most of the time that is acceptable because the frequency of these large trucks are low such that we don't, there's really no safety concerns. But as I mentioned earlier, because the stopping site distance on Eam Street is less than the minimum required. If a truck does have to swing out into the opposing lanes of traffic, we just want to verify that that whether or not that is the case and because that could be a safety concern down the line. And, you know, take a couple of steps back. If it is determined that the sight, the sightline visibility is not able to be provided, we strongly recommend perhaps some some consideration, either revise the grading or potentially even shifting the driveway location such that the the adequate sightlines are provided in the future as part of the design. Other comments that we noted is that on building number sixteen, which is shown right here in this corner, it's very close to the twenty-two foot drive aisle. We just recommend the applicant to take a closer look here for any potential constructability issues right in the corner of that building. Believe that's resolvable, but just take a closer look. Would also like to identify the uses of the various parking lots. Right now, obviously they're being divided up by an existing building. It looks like from what I heard tonight, in the future, everything will be together. So this comment may go away. But at the meantime, before we get there, it'd be good to know exactly which, what these parking areas for and how this information is presented when the project is constructed. We also recommend the applicant check the number of required accessible parking spaces based on ADA guidelines. Right now, they're missing one. But again, we'll have to look at the new plans to see if that has been changed. And the last comment we have is for the applicant to potentially take a look at this area here, which there are a lot of access points all sort of into one and and if there's any possibility, maybe shifting the driveway one way or another to reduce the number of conflict points, that would certainly be preferred. So with that, I I open up to any questions that the board may have.
Board have any questions?
I wanted to ask quickly about the the trucks, so the truck turning plan that was provided was was for the, you know, Wilmington's biggest truck, right? So I guess I don't know how, you know, he mentioned it's a ten-wheel flatbed. And so I'm picturing a truck with potentially, if not longer, at least a longer wheelbase and a tougher turn. And I mentioned this at the last meeting that I'm just, I'm concerned about where that driveway is coming off of that, off of that bridge. And I know it's, you know, the speed limit there is kind of, you know, artificially low. Just because of the visibility, but you know, the reality of it is that if if there's a ten-wheel flatbed with, you know, a twenty-five-foot wheelbase and a forklift sticking off the back of it trying to come out of there on a eight percent grade, I just, I just don't feel really good about that. I even think that the, you know, the radius of the curve at the, at the, at the intersection is a little, a little tight. In fact, you know, even even the cab over a fire truck was coming way into the other lane to, to make that right turn. And, you know, that's the direction that trucks are going to go, I I expect. So that's
Okay, thank you. Would you mind if I shared my screen again, Wayne?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think you can just share and I think mine would just go away.
No, it says I can't share while you're sharing.
Looks like mine just went away. So if you want to give it a shot.
So like I said, we just got Green's report on Friday. We sent it off to him at T E P P to address it. You know, we, one of the things that I I feel kind of obligated to say is the the speed data that he's referencing is on the other side of the bridge where the road's flat and the speed, posted speed limit's thirty. On our side of the bridge, the posted speed limit's twenty-five. So designing to something that's basically twenty miles an hour over the posted speed limit is is difficult for us, but we're looking at addressing it. We are looking at increasing these radii to thirty feet from fifteen feet to give some more room. The trucks that Garrity will be seeing are just ten-wheel flatbed, no forklift hanging off the back. They'd be coming in the site loaded and they'd be backing into the building here to get unloaded and they'd be leaving empty. That would be our largest truck.
Patrick, I don't think, nobody can see your screen, but Terry, I think just to give you, give you a thirty-second overview. No large trucks will be moving to the north end of the site. So the only loading of of flatbed ten-wheel or less dump trucks will be, or flatbed trucks will be on the south side.
Yep.
On those two overhead doors. So on the north side of the building, we have
So on the north side of the building, we have um, like E three fifty box truck vans that are like fourteen feet long.
Like a UPS van.
Yeah, a little less concerned about those coming out, you know, I know those are what's coming out loaded. You know, I, you know, my, my concern is really is turning out onto ease with.
Can I, can I ask somewhat of a, maybe an indelicate question? I, I'm basically being asked as a landowner here to design. My entrance to a speed limit that's a hundred percent in excess of the posted limit at, at the road. Based on data that's being generated from another stretch of road, half a mile away with a speed limit that's five miles per hour higher. I, i- is there sort of a reasonable factor here where this is really an enforcement issue and. And, and not really a design standard or am I, am I just way off base?
Can I, I can help answer that. Uh, first of all, uh, I think in our recommendations is to potentially take a speed uh. Uh, data at the site itself, um, understanding that what's going on, traffic volume is lower than usual, however. Uh, speed data you can still collect. Um, and at this point with more traffic kind of sort of coming back on the road, you, you probably would be able to get pretty good data. Um, regarding design standards, it is industry standard as well as national standards to use uh, the eighty fifth percentile, which. Um, is sort of the operating speed of the road, if you will, and generally site distance. Uh, is based on that value and not the posted speed value.
Right, but I guess I'm asking Wayne if I'm taking, I mean, I could take a speed rating from, from I ninety three, right? And it, it's not, if you're taking a, 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 a speed. speculation from a different stretch of road with a different speed limit. I, I, I'm, I guess I'm a little unclear as to why that's relevant to another stretch of road with a different speed limit on it.
Well, this is the closest one that we do have. Unfortunately, the study that was provided to us did not collect any uh, speed data, but as I said. Even though traffic volume is lower than your typical conditions, this is something that's relatively easy and quick and very cheap to get. Um, so if your traffic consultant agrees with that, um, maybe that's something that can be done relatively easy. As part of the response and we can see what the eighty fifth percentile would be here and then maybe put this issue to bed. Um, but I think our comment still stands is that to demonstrate. That the vehicle sitting at the driveway waiting to exit is not going to be obstructed by the guardrail as well as the grading condition, so. Regardless of the speed, I think that's something that um, should be demonstrated at, it is safe.
And, and I think.
All right, all right, I, I gotta, all right, that's good. I got a couple of questions. One, uh, Jamie, what about your tenant? What kind of trucks do they have? I assume this is a common driveway now, right?
Correct, so they've been using, uh, they have um, you know, fifty three foot eighteen wheelers, they have. Five to six deliveries a day, um, they have been having this sort of ongoing for as long as they've been there. Um, the trucks come in, they, the tractor unhooks and leaves the trailer and then comes back at a later date to pick up the empty trailer. Um, so their trucking is relatively limited, but it is with a larger truck.
So, so Wayne, that all has to get taken into account, right? Trucks from the tenant, trucks.
Absolutely.
New business?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, and Patrick, so why can't the driveway be a little wider, uh, uh, indoor slide over a little? Can you go over that again? It just seems like if it was.
So the driveway. Yeah, I'm sorry, we're talking over each other, not intentional. The driveway is twenty eight feet wide. And, and if we take the eighty fifth percentile speed data from ninety aims, which. We're having a hard time digesting, but let's just assume that we do. We're off by uh, twelve feet. So basically this curb line would need to move to there. That's the difference that we're talking about, from there to there. The reason we have the driveway set where it is, is this existing curb line. That essentially runs front to back and creates, you know, a, a north-south divide here from the. The eastern side of the site that we're redeveloping now in the western. It was, it was seen logical to us to line this curb line up. And come straight down and in, if we shift this over. Then the truck's going to be coming downhill and also. Coming over to meet this existing area because we can't crash into this building. We can't crash into the fire hydrants and post indicator valves and everything that's in these islands. So we'd be coming down and switching over, which is why we're here. And if you take the, the site distances that are in Green International's table. Well, they're good for an excess of thirty five miles an hour, which is, you know, ten miles an hour over the posted speed. So maybe it does come down to taking speed data here if, if ourselves and T E P and, and Green become at an impasse. But you know, like I said, we just got the report on Friday, we just sent it to our, our traffic consultant uh, Monday and he's in process of putting it together. Some of the other things I think in the letter are really easily addressed. I think it just boils down to the driveway. Um, I'm not.
Well, I think, I, I, I want to interrupt you a minute here. Now, I think what the problem is. We're, we're designing this. To, to try to accommodate these two buildings, but ultimately this is going to be a totally different site. So maybe this first phase needs a little more modification to the site so that. It'll address how the site is going to be in the future. So I guess that's my roundabout way of saying, maybe you do have to move those curb lines or maybe you do have to move the hydrant or.
It's, it's really.
You do have to do a little more work along there to accommodate.
It's, it's more building twelve than anything. You know, if, even if we move over at all, we're going to be coming right into building twelve. So.
Can I ask a dumb question, Mr. Chairman? Um, obviously, first of all. All code has a ten year leaseback with me, so nothing's going to happen for ten years if anything does happen.
Um, okay.
And at that time, I'm looking at obviously a fairly substantial redevelopment of the balance of the site. At which point honestly, I may want to move the driveway for other reasons. And I assume that would be for discussion on site plan approval for a, for a phase two, ten years, ten years hence. And I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to get this solved, you know, relatively painlessly for all of us, um, you know.
Okay. Anybody else get anything? Okay. I assume we don't have anybody in the audience there, Val?
Uh, we do not have any raised hands for any comments.
So we want to go. July seventh at what?
About seven forty, seven forty-five?
Did, did, Valerio Street's going to get five minutes? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's a, a likelihood that one of those two first ones may um, may be really quick, so.
Okay. Patrick, you gonna have enough time? You gonna get anything from your traffic person?
Yeah, so we.
Jamie?
Yeah, we actually worked the last twenty-four hours and drafted our response, so. It's a couple day, it's a couple, a day or two away from fine tuning and getting it submitted, so that there's plenty of time for. Green International and us to work through any items.
Okay. Wayne, you gonna mark your calendar?
What's the day again? I'm sorry, I missed it.
July seventh.
I'll be available.
Okay. Okay, so I'll take a motion to continue public hearing till July seventh at seven forty-five?
Don't move. One second.
Okay. Okay, uh, Angela, how you feel?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Randy? Chairman votes yes. All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So what do we got next? Do you want to do the board of appeals?
Sure. Let me just um, fill out the notes.
Larry, you're here. Okay, so you're up.
All right, um, excuse me. Uh, the first case seven dash twenty for forty-four, uh, Fair Meadow Road. They're looking for a special permit to extend a non-conforming structure. Um, they want to add a thirty by thirty-eight addition. It's, it's in our twenty, it's also a corner lot. Um, the existing house has front setbacks of nineteen point two and thirty point two feet. Um, where forty's required and the side and rear setbacks are uh, eleven point five and eighteen point one where twenty is required. Um, the addition has a front setback of twenty-seven point two feet where forty is required, um, but it does meet the side and rear setback requirements. In the original memo that went out, um, we said that, you know, the septic system location. Uh, being relocated was not on the plan, but since then they did um, send us a septic plan, which is included in your, in your packet in case you haven't seen it yet.
Sean, what do you think?
I mean, I didn't see the, I didn't see the new one that had the septic, so I'm, I'm going to look at that too.
Oh, very good, Val. It's quite the addition there, it's pretty big.
It is.
Nichols view.
I don't know what Fair Meadow is.
So, uh, Fair Meadow, so. They meet the setbacks now, but with the addition they will not? Is that what we just said?
No, they do not meet the setbacks right now, um. I don't think they meet any of the setbacks actually, sorry, I, I lost my notes being in full screen here.
All right, so, so why? I mean, that's a thirty-six by thirty, what, that's bigger than the original house, isn't it?
Um, yeah, thirty, thirty by thirty-eight and it, it probably is about the same size, uh, foundation wise as the existing house. Um, let me see, okay, so I guess the, the addition, though the front setback does not meet. The forty foot requirement, um, it is uh, farther away, I guess, than the existing house, um. But they, they, neither of them meet that front setback.
The, the problem is there are a twelve thousand square foot lot in a R twenty.
Right.
What it all is.
Yeah, but we're increasing its, its non-compliance by a hundred percent, right?
Right. I mean, it's, it's bigger than the original.
So, like, correct me, Val, if I'm wrong, I mean, in the old days of the board, you know, you weren't supposed to go beyond fifty percent, so. Does that still apply or did I make that up?
It's not a, it's not a rule, I don't think, but um, you know, it's not a, it's nothing that's in the bylaw, but it is a. A metric that you can certainly use as a standard um, in practice.
I mean, it was one, since Randy and I have been on the board, that was the standard we always use, so.
Been using it since I've been.
That's a long time, so. That just seems to me that this is uh, quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, the only plus side about it is that at least it's not um, blocking the corner more than the existing as far as. You know, being a corner lot, but um.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's doubling the. The non-conformity.
And that's just because it's on the other side, right?
Yeah, the problem with this plan is we don't know how it affects any of the other properties, right?
Right.
Fair Meadow is a street, right? It's not an, it's not a. Uh, unacceptable way or anything, right?
Uh, it is, I think it's a, a public way. Maybe I can um, pull up.
I think, uh, yeah, but I mean, it's signed and it's, it's.
It's an actual street.
Street, yeah.
And I didn't see exactly what they're proposing to put in that new area. Does, does it show or do they talk about that?
Uh, you mean like house plans? Yes, uh, let me double check, I think that we.
Is that right?
House plans got added as well. Um.
I don't think they have interior, they have.
Yeah.
They have exterior plants, or exterior.
Okay, yep. Okay.
Basement, like a foundation plant.
Yeah, all right, I see that.
So is this like a, just a whole nother house? I mean.
In law, yeah.
It's a, I mean, it looks like it's a garage and.
So this is.
It looks like one big window above it.
This is the existing, if you can see my screen, um, the existing right here. Um, so they've got neighbors behind, neighbors to the side. So their new um, addition would be right here, their septic right here.
Is it more detrimental?
We have a retaining wall and it's up the tank and they can't tell.
Yeah, I was looking.
Directional. One hundred eighty-nine, ninety. It's kind of hard to tell.
I, I think it's pretty flat, Mike, I was trying to check on that. I, I don't, I don't think it's more than like a foot.
Okay.
That one hundred point eighty-nine is the uh, the length of that.
Pipe, yeah. Oh. What is that?
That's the.
The length of the.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So what's there now? They're knocking down a shed or an existing garage to be rez'd, so.
Yeah. Looks like a detached garage.
Yeah, it's, it's just a little one car, um.
All right, I, I'm, I'm not in favor, it just seems too big to me, but.
It's pretty big, it wouldn't be the biggest thing around, I'm looking at the, looking at it right now.
Are you looking on street view?
Yeah, it will be.
What do the other houses look like?
They look like that house. There's a split next door, I think, a split entry next, yeah, split entry next door. A ranch that's been added on to across the street.
So this is the house here?
We're not seeing your screen, Val.
What's that?
Yeah, we're not seeing it.
Oh, we're not? Okay.
No.
Here, I might have to dump it before you.
Now?
There you go. That's what's there now?
That's, that's what's there now. Um.
Looks fake.
Across the street. Looks fake. Um. Down the street. Got this next door. Cross the street.
It doesn't look so bad in that picture, I guess. Taking out the hole, yeah.
Yeah, septic would go over here.
Right in the front.
Yeah, along this side. And then this would be all new dwelling.
Yeah. How's everybody feel? Don't all talk at once.
They could certainly make it narrower without losing two cars worth of garage, put it that way, you know, I mean. They could, they could definitely do that. It's twenty, it's twenty eight feet, I mean, they could knock four feet off of it without having too much of a problem parking.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
I guess we should say they should try to maximize these setbacks and, and um. make sure it blends in with the neighborhood.
I concur.
Yeah.
And I think we ought to say, we recommend to the Board of Appeals, we like, on these additions, not to go um, beyond fifty percent more. If it's non-compliant. That's our feeling, they can do what they do. Is that your case here?
You mean, increasing the non-conformity by more than fifty percent is what you're, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Increasing the non-conforming structure by not more than fifty percent?
Yeah, so like, if, if, if the house is two thousand square feet, they should only add on another thousand. The house is three thousand and they can only go fifteen hundred. Right? What we don't want them to do is the house is two thousand and they add two thousand, say, well, we only fifty percent, that's not what the intent is. Okay, so if, whatever the existing square footage is and they be our recommendation, they don't increase the non-conformity by fifty percent. At least that's the way I feel. I think it's a good rule to live by. How many houses around, so it's in our twenty zone, I don't know, how many, can you tell, Val? How many houses around in that area are all our twenties? I mean, it, you know, the Stutton, you know, with only fifteen thousand square feet where they need twenty, so.
Yeah, you, there's, it looks like there's kind of an assortment of lot sizes, some are larger, some are small. Um, it's kind of a mix.
It definitely, definitely looks like an R ten that is zoned R twenty. Couple of larger houses on, uh, Cherry Road, larger lots on, uh, Cherry Road.
Yeah. Yeah, the ones that back up to the Shawshank River are a little bit larger. Um, but the interior lots are pretty small.
Yeah, I mean, the, the areas tight and it's, and the houses aren't large.
Alright, good?
Yeah, we're good.
I'm good.
Alright, what's next?
Uh, let's see, next is fifty-three North Street. Um, they're also doing a special permit to extend a non-conforming structure. Um, they want to put a nineteen by twenty addition, um, which is a garage with a room above it. And, um, it's in our twenty. The existing house meets all the setback requirements except for one side, uh, which is nineteen point five where twenty feet is required. Um, the addition meets front and rear setback requirements, but has a side setback of ten point nine where twenty feet is required.
So I didn't love this one, because they, they're non-conforming on, on one side and they're creating a non-conformity on the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least at least the non-conformity is maybe from a little bit of a build out there, it's only a half foot, so. It's not the end of the world.
The existing.
The existing one, yeah.
Yeah, the existing non-conformity is just that, that one side that's off by a half a foot, at its closest point to the lot line. Um, but it's the, the new one that really has a, a much more decreased, uh, side setback that doesn't meet it.
Again, another odd shaped lot.
I mean, I'm not, I'm, I, I'm not sure it's, it's a good idea to recommend that they introduce a new non-conformity, you know, I mean, that's kinda tough.
Yeah. I guess the question would be, why can't they go up towards the deck, I guess, I don't know.
Well, they're trying to build a garage.
Oh, they want a garage, they're trying to build a garage, so I got you.
Maybe they can do one car instead of two?
It is one, I, I.
I think it is.
I looked at it earlier. But they could, um, they could, they got some space in that front setback, they could actually really decrease what they're proposing and still get a car in there, but it'd be tough, I mean.
Yeah, it'd be tough. Again, it's hard from these plans really to judge what's, you know, how far away is the other house.
That was, I was kinda thinking too.
I can, um, I can pull up the, um, the GIS, give me a second.
Looks like right now they actually have a shed, um, very close to the lot line, which they're gonna take down when they, um, if they put up this garage. And there's a fence, at least according to Google, but this was twenty thirteen, so who knows if that's still there.
I would assume the above-ground pool doesn't meet the setback, right?
So number fifty-three is right here. If you can see my screen.
Any other house is close, too.
Yeah, so I assume where the driveway is, is where they want to put the addition.
Yeah.
Right in there.
Oh, that way.
This way, right here.
Oh, so there's. Some room between them and the next house, I guess.
Yeah, it looks like, um, doesn't look like, um, there are a lot of garages in this area.
Right.
Uh, I, I think we, I think we gotta kinda be consistent here about the, uh, in, you know, increase of the non-conformities, you know? And then let the Board of Appeals decide.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty, that, that is relatively close.
So would it be that the board wouldn't recommend creating a new non-conformity?
That's how I feel.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. I wanna go to the next one, it's, uh, it's Princeton, I didn't know if you wanna.
Yeah, so, um, Princeton, um, Properties is proposing a forty B development at Jefferson Road in Middlesex. Um, the materials were in the Dropbox for you to review. Um, they're going through the ZBA, uh, for a comprehensive permit. And, um, as part of that review, um, they're being peer reviewed for traffic, um, the civil and stormwater is being peer reviewed, um, water and sewer being peer reviewed. They're proposing a sewer extension from Salem Street down to the site with a, um, pump station. Um, we are, um, having them design that so that, um, all the homes that are in the sewer district along that stretch could, um, tie into that. So there's, there's really a lot of information there, there's a hundred and eight units proposed, um, twenty percent will be affordable at fifty percent AMI. Um, rental units, um, two buildings, one in the front, up on Middlesex Ave, and one in the back, kinda where that um, parking lot is, that they park trucks in behind the office building. Across the, um, little bridge there. Um, so there's a lot of materials in there for your review, um, what I thought I could do is, um, as the peer review letters, the comments are um, submitted to the ZBA, is pass those along to you guys, um, as well. Um, you don't have to make a recommendation on this tonight, um, you can kinda wait to see where um, things shake out, um, we can give you an update at the next meeting, um, and cover it then. Um, and you can let me know how much information you want on the project. Um, if you want sort of the applicant to present, I'm sure that they would be able to do that, um, it's up to you.
Ask a question on this, uh, project?
Say that again?
Say, I, I was just, I wanted to ask a question on this project, um. What is, uh, what's the planning board's responsibility on, on this, um, type of a, type of, of project? They're, they're go, they're going to ZBA first, is that?
Yeah, we don't have any say. We'll look at it just like, just like, uh, the one we just did in the guy's garage, right? That's really how we.
And then they're gonna come through us and do stormwater and, and that sort of thing, or?
Nope.
No. No, so everything is, um, everything is included in the ZBA approval. Um, even the subdivision of land, um, the stormwater, all of it. Um, so, really, you would be looking at all of that information and making a recommendation to the ZBA. Um, the Conservation Commission reviews it for the wetlands, and that's the only other permit, um, that they get. So it's all through the ZBA, um, looking for a recommendation from this board. Um, but like I said, the, the plans are still being reviewed, um, there will be plan changes, um, so I think it's early to give a recommendation, um, on the technical aspects, and I can, um, forward any comments to you guys to keep you in the loop on, um, on the progression of the project.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll have to think about whether or not we want them to make a presentation to us, I don't know.
Yeah, it could, it could, yeah, it could be awkward, um, I, I can do that, um, if you want, um, kinda go over the, the plans and I, I think really what's gonna be helpful is you guys seeing the comments, um, from the peer reviewers and from staff, um, to get an idea of what the what the issues are, um, they are proposing four-story buildings. Um, which is one of the, um, one of the, the points of discussion at the last ZBA hearing. Um, and, um, you know, so it's gonna be, it, it'll be less than fifty-five feet, but it'll be four stories with a half story of parking. Um, they're gonna do a level of underground parking, half underground. They're really constrained by the, um, the riverfront area from Lover, Lovers Brook, um, and the wetlands, um, so it's a tight site. Um, what else can I tell you? Um, but there will be, I, I, you know, I anticipate that there's gonna be plan changes, um, with the comments that are being written up by the peer reviewers, traffic, um, Green International's doing the peer review for traffic. Um, BSC Group is doing the, um, civil, uh, site design and stormwater and wetlands. Um, and then Kleinfelder, um, is doing the water and, um, Arcatus is doing the sewer, um, as usual.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll, um, put that off, we'll put that on the agenda for next time.
Okay.
Alright, um, for, ready to go on to the next one?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, before you go on, one, one thing, out of all the review on the Princeton thing, I want Randy to review it architecturally, if she doesn't mind, if she can ame. Because civil-wise and all that other part, I mean, we, we don't really have any say, but she's, she's the, uh, expert on that, and she's very good at it, so I would respect her opinion greatly. And I think the Board of Appeals should too.
And Randy, there was a discussion, um, at the last ZBA about, um, one of the members said, you know, the height really wa, needs to get pushed down. Um, but, you know, then there were others who thought that really, there really should be a pitched roof. Um, that does bring the height up, but it also is an architectural feature that, um, most people want to see. So there was that sort of discussion about whether you lower the height by kind of s, making the roof a little bit squatter, um, or you keep the slope, um, which makes the building taller, but has a different look. So I think they, that your input would be greatly appreciated.
I can see her waving now, so.
Yeah, she's nodding her head, yes.
It wasn't on my screen.
Alright, we can move on. Hopefully that's not going together. Good.
Uh, we got four oh seven Chestnut Street, this is another extending a non-conforming structure, um. It's a twenty by twenty-five foot addition and a four by ten front entry on an existing house, um, it's an R sixty. And the existing house meets all of those zoning requirements except one side, um, where it's twelve point five feet at its closest point to the lot line and sixteen point nine feet from the farthest point. Um, twenty-five feet is required there for that side setback. Um, the proposed addition is on the rear of the house and, um, both that addition and the front entry do meet all setback requirements. So, I mean, they wouldn't be creating or extend, really, making the non-conformity worse, I suppose, but, um, what they're proposing does not, uh, it, it does meet all of the setbacks.
Alright.
I don't have a problem with this one.
This one looks good.
Okay. Alright, and here lastly, we have, uh, Five Bailey Road. They are looking for a variance. Um, it's in our twenty, and they want to install a fifteen by thirty-foot oval above-ground pool. Um, it would meet setback requirements except for one of the sides. Um, it would be ten feet where twenty feet is required, and, um, in case it matters for context, that that edge of the lot line is where it abuts, um, a parcel of town-owned undeveloped land. Um, but they are proposing half of the required setback.
Can you say that again? My computer, uh, IT is trying to upgrade my computer while I'm on this, so go ahead.
Do you want me to go through the, the whole thing again, or you just missed the end, or? Go through it again?
Yeah, go through the, go through that again, yeah.
Alright, um, so they're looking for a variance. They're in our twenty, um, they wanna put in that pool, and it, it won't meet the side setback.
Okay, so.
So ten feet where twenty is required is what they're proposing. And, and, um, that lot right next to it that's owned by the town is, as of right now, undeveloped, just undeveloped town-owned land.
Is it a buildable lot? Do you know? Do, do you know, Val?
We haven't researched it to see if it's buildable or not, um. So I don't know. It's, um, I don't believe it's conservation land, so it, you know, it, it could be, um, it, there's potential that it could be developed, we just haven't, we haven't done any title work or anything to, to see.
Yeah, but you don't know, is it twenty, is it, would it meet twenty thousand or ten thousand? What, what is it? You know? How big a lot is?
It, it doesn't, I think I, I looked at it earlier, it was like a thousand something.
But even if it doesn't, it could, you know.
Be affordable housing or something? Could be affordable housing or something down the road.
Could be.
Uh, pool is not an essential part of life, yeah. So. Again, I think we need to be consistent with what we said earlier, and so I think it just increases non-conformity, right?
It's, um, the statement is not, non-conforming, but it is creating a, a non-conformity where it didn't exist before.
They got a difficult response, variance one though, is that there's no actual hardship
Right.
demonstrated, that's our usual response.
Okay.
It's not a special permit, this is a variance.
Right.
So, leave it up to the Board of Appeals.
So, so the comment is no, there was no hardship demonstrated?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And that's it for the ZBA.
So Val, getting back to the Form A, so is that something that's gonna be signed electronically?
No, that's something that, um, once those votes that you guys took, um, about electronic signatures and, um, Mike, you signing for the board. once those are recorded, which I'm waiting for, um, any minute now, um, you will be able to sign A and R plans and subdivision plans, um, for the board. So you will sign that, um, once we get that vote recorded. Um, same as endorsing, um, other plans, um, such as the one that's next on the agenda for two-twenty-eight Andover Street.
So, I'll come by Town Hall, text you, you'll come out, put a six-foot table between us? And I'll sign them?
That's right.
With my mask on?
Yes, and I will have my mask on.
Got it. Or you could leave them in the nice conference room that you have, and I can go in there all by myself and sign it, right?
We'll figure something out.
Okay. What else we got, anything else?
So, um, like I said, there's, um, plans for two-twenty-eight Andover Street, um, that are ready for endorsement. Uh, we would just need a, a vote of the board, and then, um, once we're set up for, for Mike to sign, we'll get those signed and back to the applicant. Um, there were no, um, Sierra, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there were any changes to the plan, it was just to supply them for endorsement.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just had to submit a couple of other things that, that weren't plan changes, and they've, they've done that.
So, you'll give me a buzz and tell me when to come by, and I'll sign everything?
Yep.
Do we need to vote on something tonight?
Yeah, you, usually you vote to endorse the plans.
And you recommend that they're good?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to endorse the plans that submitted. How do you vote there, Terry?
So moved.
Oh, yeah, so moved, two seconds.
I'll second.
Alright. Angela, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Yes.
Let me read my chat here, uh, let's see, what do you got there, Rondi, write it in. Chairman's in favor.
Okay. Okay. Alright.
She said yes, she wrote it in the chat, so... Board of Appeals, oh, business request to endorse. Request to extend approval?
Yes, that's the, um, the one last thing on the agenda. Um, I believe, um, Michael Field is on, um, to, um, to make the request of the board. This is for sixty-six industrial, um, that was approved several years ago. Um, and there's an issue with the, um, with the utility easement.
I haven't resolved it yet.
Good, good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, may I speak there?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, oh, I'm sorry, that's...
Well, as, as, by the way, Ms. Gingrich and Ms. Liciardi have been extremely, uh, cooperative and informative in helping me along here. Um, I appeared bef- before you on, uh, at the end of this, I'm sorry, the beginning of December, and at that time, the approval was probably, uh, over two years old and maybe two and a half years old. If you recall, a condition of the approval with respect to the improvements in this easement area are that Mr. Cannibos, uh, Butter, behind us, acknowledged work as contemplated by the site plan approval. Notwithstanding the fact that for two years, I have negotiated with his lawyer, Mr. Sutton, I think today, in preparation for some, for this meeting tonight, I counted approximately fifty emails with all kinds of attachments going back and forth, trying to come to some easement agreement with him, and ultimately, he's just stonewalled us and has not agreed. Um, the order says that I must get, or that he is supposed to give his acknowledgement. He clearly, he's, he's been to every meeting that I've appeared before you. I believe this is, would be the third or the fourth one, I'm not sure he's here tonight, but he clearly knows, and his lawyer clearly knows, what is contemplated by the order. What I should also indicate to you is that eve- what, what I'm, what I'm, what I will ask for, what I'm asking for tonight is to put on the agenda for the next meeting, uh, a request that we eliminate, that the, his acknowledgement be eliminated, nothing else, only the fact, the condition that he acknowledged what is in the order. Let me point out something else, I wish this would be the end of the beginning, the beginning of the beginning, because even if the board does eliminate that condition, uh, my client, Bagel Electric, can't just go in there and start work pursuant to your order, because we will be changing a recorded easement. I can't do that without a court order, and ultimately, I'm gonna have to go to the land court and get permission. But before I get permission from the land court, I want to take this order and make sure we are in compliance with it. And we're not in compliance with it until he either issues an acknowledgement, which he is not gonna do, or until the board agrees to eliminate that. Um, so that's essentially why I'm here tonight, to, to, to ask that if we put on this, uh, agenda.
So, go ahead, Val.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, um, the request is to extend their approval for two months so that, um, their approval is still good when you, um, consider the, the change. Um, they have filed, um, a site plan review application to, um, amend that decision that was issued, um, those years ago. Um, this tonight is just to extend the approval so that it's still good when you're considering that.
Ms. Gingrich, I, I, and I don't mean to be telling you guys, uh, any, any of the rules, the COVID rules which apply to planning boards, but my understanding is that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order, any approval is in effect by March tenth, shall not expire during the state of emergency. So, I think three months of the six-month approval was probably used up by March tenth, but then it freezes until the state of emergency is over. I'm coming before you to be very respectful of you guys, because you've been very kind to me so far. Um, but I don't think, as a matter of, uh, in a technical sense of the order, it will expire until three months after the state of emergency is over. Ms. Gingrich, you probably know more about this than I do, but that was my reading of the Governor's Executive Order.
Okay, so we don't have, the board doesn't have to extend that approval tonight if you rather not?
No, no, only, only if you agree with me as to the effect of the executive order. I don't want to, um, buck up the record any more than, than is, you know, uh, that is absolutely required.
Well, I, 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 I think just to be safe, we ought to probably go the two months, because I think what we'll probably do is, is, we'll probably need some input from Town Council, and then we'll probably talk about it at the next meeting, and I think, you know, we understand where you're coming from, we want to help you out here, we, but, you know...
At the next meeting, I will submit an affidavit, demonstrate what is still with track. Thank you, Mr. ... And thank you, Ms. Gingrich.
Okay, so, so, so why don't we do this then, why don't we extend it for two months? That way we protect everybody involved, and we don't have a problem. Alright, so I'll take a motion to extend the action deadlines, is that what we're doing, Val, the action deadline?
You're extending the, um, the site plan approval.
Site plan, well, sorry, so we'll take a motion to extend the site plan approval to, what do you want to say? When's it supposed to expire?
Well, it expires now on June sixth, Ms. Gingrich.
June sixth, so, so we'll extend it to, uh, August thirtieth.
August sixth.
Hmm, but what if we need to meet on August sixth? Well, alright, we can do it in July then, alright, we'll extend it to August sixth. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second, Sean?
Second, Sean.
Okay, alright, all in favor, um, Terry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, Rondi, type something in. Chairman votes yes.
The agenda then for Ju- in July, July meeting, the issue of a limited...
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so you, you submitted the site plan review application, um, I think that's being, or has been, um, reviewed for completeness. Um, Sierra, jump in if I'm wrong, but I think we reviewed that, and, um, and that will be placed on the, um, July agenda.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gingrich, I appreciate you guys, I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're good?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Well, anything else?
Uh, just a reminder that next week, um, next Tuesday is the joint public hearing with the Finance Committee. Uh, I'll be sending, I'll be sending out an email, um, in the next couple days with the, um, the details, the agenda, the Zoom invite.
So, I have to go into the high school?
Yeah, so because the last, um, the last time it was continued to the auditorium, the high school auditorium at seven o'clock, you and John Doherty are gonna go to the high school, open the meeting, and continue it to online at seven-thirty. So, so, um...
So then I gotta rush home, get online, we'll do a Zoom. So, so the thing is, he, he sent me an invite to a meeting, I, and I, I kept accepting it, but it wasn't working, so I don't, so I just wanted to make sure that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing, and I'll, I'll, um, I'll talk to you...
Seven o'clock to the high school, and...
And drive, drive home, get online by seven-thirty.
Okay.
Think you have a police escort as well.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, that's it, I think.
Alright.
So, so one more thing though, what are we doing about town meetings, what's the latest? Is that true, we're gonna meet at the park or something, with, with, stadium?
The stadium, um, with tents, um, or a tent, um, that's the idea at this point. June twenty-seventh at the high school outside in the stadium. I, I think more details to come.
In a tent? So if we're in a tent, what's the difference about being in the auditorium?
Open air, open air. I will, I, I think there will be, uh, um, protocols in place, so we'll just have to, um, to wait to see what those are, and, um... Let's see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, meetings are done, thank you, everybody.
Night, thank, good night, thank you.
Good night.